Uh, recognition, recognition of the Jackson County High School academic team. Jordan Hayes.
Hi there. Well, we want to thank you all for recognizing us. Uh, we're always very glad that we are, um, have been to a very supportive school and a very supportive district. So, we had a very, very great season with, uh, academic team this year. So, as I'm sure most people know, um, academic team were primarily, uh, quick recall, but we also, um, a lot of our accolades and achievements come from the fact that our students take tests in individual assessments. So, I'm just gonna run down just kind of where our big placements were this year. So, if you wanna click through. So, just to explain, uh, kinda like how we're in the 33th gen like when it comes to, uh, basketball and things like that. We have a league of our own that we've been in for about two decades now. It's called the Red River Academic League, and it's primarily those counties that, kinda more like 14th district if you wanna think about it. It's more of your Wolf County, Pope County. That's the direction we go when we come to our, uh, one-on-one competitions in the fall. So, we have a tournament that ends our fall, uh, league plays. Um, so here was our placement for, uh, in the fall tournament. And, oh, I need to introduce who is here. So, we have Aiden Witt. Wave Aiden. We got Molly Bowles. There we go. And we got Bella Peters right here. And Mr. Owen Gray, who's on double duty today.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we love you, we love you. Um, alright, so, you wanna go through? So, but our big thing that we work up to every year is our Governor's Cup. So, this is what, um, is our big state-sponsored competition that starts at the district, goes on to the region, and then we get to state level. So, we actually saw our district, um, they did some kinda redistricting the last couple years, and our new one's quite small, so, um, which, we're common. It's just us, Rock Castle, and Estle. Uh, we were champions overall this year with that district in quick recall, and we were second place overall. There's a big one listed placements there. Those are, actually, I think all of our students participate all places and something this year in district. Alright, then we go on to regions, and, uh, just like in basketball, you had to get at least second place or up, uh, in quick recall to go on, or you had to place in the top five, uh, testing to, uh, advance to region. So, I think one of the most amazing things that we've done this year is that we got third place overall at region. So, we're in the 12th region. And so, I just kinda wanna list off some of the schools that we beat, 'cause it's not the kinda thing we highlight too much in the paper or online, 'cause in basketball, it's like very well-known who we went up and beat, but we don't. We try to uplift who won. Everybody's great points. We don't talk a lot about who we beat. So, here, we got third place overall regions, that's great, love it. We got, uh, board, Madison Southern, great schools. Here's the schools that we beat out. Um, Casey County, Madison Central, Garrett County, West and East Esmond, Brea Community, Model Lab, Rock Castle, Estle, and Lincoln County.
Yes.
Our students, when academically competing with all their students, beat 'em. So, kinda love that. And so, uh, when we talk, we talk about Governor's Cup, state is, you know, the ultimate goal. Uh, we take 'em up to Louisville, um, and, uh, so we had three straight qualify, state qualifiers this year, that's great. We had two last year, like our number's going up. Gabe Gross is first in science, Molly second in science, Molly's here today. And then Aiden Witt, he got second in arts humanities, which is funny because everybody, if you know Aiden, you think he is the math whiz, and he's the math whiz, but, uh, he doesn't like to be, uh, put in the box. So, he decided arts humanities was gonna be his big thing, and, uh, if you wanna click through. Uh, so we took a math whiz, and he gets 17th overall in the state for, uh, arts humanities. That's just kinda shows you how dynamic our team can be. And, uh, Gabe and Molly did excellent in science. So, I mean, 51, that means she was 51st, you know, best in the state. That's a lot of kids. We think of all of our districts, all of our regions, it's just amazing. So, just another overview, this is our main players. So, we've got Lawson Sully, Aiden Witt, Molly Bowles, Gabe Gross, Haley Judd, she's an excellent rider for us, as well as Bella, she's always a great rider. Owen, he's one of our social studies kings, he's great. And we got Jackson Turner there on the far right. So, anyway, another great year. Oh, hold up their trophies. So, we got, that's from, uh, our district, and then that's from our region there, Aiden Smith. Awesome. That's all I've got to share with you. If you want, have any questions for me, um...
Well, we asked her to take pictures.
Oh, it's a duty.
So, they can come in and have their picture, and Molly does get our here.
Yes.
So, Molly is here, correct?
Yes, Molly.
And he coaches Miss Randy to him.
Yes, come on Randy.
And you can see Randy's here. I went. Did he know you was gonna get that date?
Well, no, I didn't check.
Did you say?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
I didn't tell him either. Aiden's probably at the bottom of the list. Bella's middle.
Yes, Nick said.
See, I'm, you got another duty. Uh, actually, I'll put this tonight, we got Aiden and Bella.
Yes, we got Miss Vila. That was yours, yes.
There you go.
And Aiden. And so, the rest, I'll let you take back, Jordan.
Perfect.
And you all can give them to him, and tell him he has them. So, we would, if you all want to come, we'll take a picture with all of ours.
Yes, yes. Um, there you go.
I'm gonna make you all.
Alright, we're back, okay. She don't think, I swear, we can...
I don't know these people.
Okay. Alright, um, yeah, I heard this word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Any firm thing you do, because I am very proud of our academics, just as much as schools.
Yes, of course.
Uh, next, we have Jackson County Middle School Construction Update, the construction team.
This past month, we finished up all the brickwork, got the aluminum storefront windows in over there, it's looking really good. Did a lot of painting, finally put the ceilings back in, and did a little more demo, we'd be ready for this summer. Looking forward to it finally coming together. The bleachers are gonna start in the next week, so, well, we got a lot going on between now and later, so, it'll be good when it's all done.
They worked very hard over spring, right?
Yeah, they did a lot.
Yes.
I was impressed, so, that's all I got on that one, so. Any questions?
Actually, I do. Um, we got a, uh, I'm not really sure if it would be for you or not, a subcontract change order?
Yeah, that's, I wouldn't talk about that right now, I saw it farther down on the agenda, but, yes, uh...
Well, we can, we can wait and address that.
No, we can, whatever, y'all. I am at the board's pleasure.
Yeah, it's a regular meeting, so, it's not...
You go ahead, so you can get it over and out of line.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't make any votes right now, but if they want, generally speaking, where it says middle school update.
Oh, okay. Um, I noticed when we, when I was looking at this, there was code compliance issues?
Yes, ma'am. So, there, there are, uh, several of the change orders, and I think part of that was a discommunication from our office. Some of these change orders were intended to have been presented back in February, and I didn't, my, my office didn't convey me that they didn't go, but, um, so, I, they're in a couple of different groups, uh, where I grouped them for my sake of being able to address them with you. There were several things that we've encountered that were code compliance issues, uh, as the contractors were working through the demo, as contractors were working through the new install. The biggest, uh, section of code compliance that were issues that we encountered were related to the sprinkler system. So, initially, whenever they came to the site, there was a large, uh, initially, when they came to the site and started working, in the chemical room, there was an issue with the fire pump. The fire pump was, uh, it was periodically inspected, and it had been signed off on, but it was not up to code, and it was not functional. So, the fire pump had to be replaced. Um, in addition to that, there were some other testing that had to be, what it ended up being was, we were gonna see if it could be because, from the time that that building had been, we were trying to save the school some money, from the time that the building had been built till now, there was actually increased water pressure. We would not know how much that water pressure had increased without testing it to see whether or not we could get rid of the fire pump. It would've been a savings of about $90,000. Uh, the test was about $6,000, but it would've been a savings of $90,000 had there been enough water pressure there. There was still not, so, the fire pump unfortunately did have to go back in. A couple of the other items that we've encountered, uh, as they're working through it, sprinkler heads in the gym had previously been spray painted at some point in time, or painted over at some point in time. Some of those things, as we're working through that, again, we met with the fire marshal and all the other state officials that had, that we had to have okay or sign off on those things, to see, because they are existing conditions, and I'm not trying to, um, definitely not trying to make anybody less safe in the school, but I also wanna make sure that we are doing all of our due diligence to make sure that the school's not spending money that they don't have to. So, the contractor had said, there's no way that my code inspector's gonna come in and approve that. So, we brought fire marshal in, asked the fire marshal if that was the case, fire marshal completely agreed, said the sprinkler heads in the gym are gonna have to be replaced because they've been painted over at some point in time. There were some other items, though, that covers the fire pump design for the code issues anyway. Uh, one other item, the engineer and the architect had worked on the front end of the project to ensure that, uh, everything's gonna be up to code, electrically, mechanically, all of those things. They worked with all the local, uh, uh, utility companies to make sure that everything was in compliance, all of those things. A year later, whenever all the work's actually getting done, new people, people leave offices, people come in, there were new people now at the local utility company, and what they said was okay before changed their mind and said it was not okay. Even with paper trail and everything, they said, you know, my, that may've been what my predecessor said was okay, it was not. So, what that amounts to is that previously, they had okayed essentially adding a pull box on the side of a transformer, an existing transformer. They said, hey, we can add onto that and pull some new electric from it. Uh, a year later, they came in and said, absolutely not, we have to add a new transformer. So, that was, some of the, and I think that pretty much covers all the code compliance issues.
I wanna ask you this, because I'm just curious, if something had happened and the sprinklers were needed, would they have worked?
In the gym, no. Um, and it, it is a good thing that that was caught. With that being said, prior to catching, which was one of the first things that was caught, was the fire pump. Prior to catching any of that, at the point in time when we saw the fire pump, if that, if anything had happened in the school, the fire pump was not, it was not functional at all, there would've not been a sprinkler system. Yes, ma'am?
That, that just concerned me, because, you know, you said you were compliance, you know, that compliance issues, and that just worried me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Absolutely. And I'd be happy if anybody has any other questions about anything. There, uh, and I know that you all have looked through the packet, so, one item that we've talked about is the addition of the scope of the kitchen to that. Uh, the, previously, within the scope of the project, the kitchen was essentially not being touched. All of the kitchen PR collectively, uh, is $291,000 and change, but that is essentially all the work that had been done throughout the school, and every other location of the school, you were doing all of that in the kitchen. New HVAC, new lighting, new floors, new ceilings. One thing that was aside from the kitchen, kinda grouped in, because that kitchen was previously scheduled not to be touched, as we did some more investigatory work in there, it was noted while we were working with kitchen staff that the exhaust fan was not functioning properly. So, uh, we've gone ahead and proposed to take care of that as well. Uh, i- if, if you are not taking care of that right now, you're going backwards, given the fact, you're taking the roof off, you're fixing everything, 'cause that exhaust punch is up through the roof, sits on top of what the new roof would be essentially on the curb, uh, and if you're not taking care of that right now, you're kinda moving backwards as far as, you're gonna be double paying to put the old not-functioning hood back and then go back and replace it later.
Was the last water test, pressure, was it less than the first one or...
It was more, but it was still below the threshold needed for the fire pump. And it was actually considerably more. Uh, I, I'm sure it had something to do with that big water tower y'all got up on top of the hill. I laughed because I drove up there, looked at building the DM that station, I think.
With the first plan's being when McKee was getting water out of the peace, that reservoir here?
At one time, that's when it was the first one, that was.
So, they closed it down, never did anything at the time?
But they wasn't getting no water at that time when we were doing the pressure test, I believe it was happening.
Yeah. But it was considerably more, but it was still below the threshold. And then, things that come into play when you're talking about that, it's not just the pressure of the water, it's the pressure of the water versus the length that it's traveling within the building, given the fact, it, it realistically, and that was one of the things that we ran several iterations of with the fire protection contractor, is that, uh, that building's been added on to a time or two, and if it had a little less square footage, it probably would've met the threshold, but being in square footage, that was that, it exceeded that.
Now, can the pump tested?
So, the pump is supposed to be tested and is, not tested, but inspected annually.
So, had it been tested, supposedly been signed off?
It had been, yes, sir, it had been signed off.
Any other questions? I'm just happy it was, we've found...
Absolutely, no, and that's, that is, that's very, I mean, that's life safety, that's, it can't get more important.
I'm excited to see the building is completely done.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm telling you, the gym looks completely different with the new floor, and then by the time they get the new bleachers in there, it's gonna be, it, it'll be getting painted around the same time while they put the new bleachers in, it's gonna be shot, it will be very nice.
Thanks, you don't pay the picture.
Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next is superintendent standard update.
Okay. This month's standard that I have documented is the influential leadership, and so, there are different things that I've done, just that I took it out of, and one of the first ones is, of course, I talked to Representative Truitt to discuss calendar issues for him to fight on our behalf in the legislative, which he did, and he won, at least it's already fought really hard on that. Spoke with Commissioner Fletcher's office during the active shooter incident to fight for our district for more NTI days, and that just sort of worked with what, uh, Mr. Truitt did, and so, they worked together and did end up giving us some leeway there. Excuse me. Uh, join and participate in the Friday legislative updates by Zoom with other superintendents, that was sort of passed, the Kentucky Association for School Superintendents, and that was very informative, because it would keep us up to date, what was passed and what was not, if we needed to make more calls for representative, uh, and our legislators, so it was, uh, very good. Uh, stood up against our, and educated our community on amendment two, and then, of course, I always discuss issues with our staff to decide what is best for the district. So, that just means whether it's, uh, political, educational, instructional, no matter what it is, um, construction, you know, we're always talking with each other just to make sure that we're doing everything that needs to be done in our district, so, those were a few things.
Thank you. Next is, uh, discuss the exploration of a daycare for the Jackson County Public Schools employees only.
So, this is something I'm pretty excited about, and I had been, uh, talking with my mentor, Superintendent Miss Sarah Lawson, and, um, this is something too, in my superintendent cohort, you know, as you all can see, we've had teaching vacancies for the entire school year, which is ridiculous. Back in the day, 26, 30 years ago, there were people standing in line, you know, wanting teaching jobs, and you'd have to wait your turn, or you'd have to be really good, you know, in order to get one. Now, we're begging teachers to come, we're begging subs to come hold that place. So, something that, when talking to people, a good recruitment and retention strategy are daycares. And, we've had teachers that have been working, they've had children, and they've not come back to work, and you know, me personally, as a teacher years ago, I fought that battle. If I would've had a daycare to take my child to and then go to my school and work, that would've meant the world to me. Um, and not only those that don't even have that opportunity, but even the price itself. I don't know if you all have checked into it, but daycare is pretty, pretty expensive. Um, so, I met with a lady from KDE that is over, and she came to the district and me, and she and I spoke, and she was excited for me, she said, this is huge for Jackson County and surrounding, and she said, there's nobody around you really doing that, she said, you know, this is, is pretty big. Um, so, my plan was, I don't know if you're all are familiar with the learning center back here, um, 'cause it's sort of off to its sale and separate, and she went and checked the location, and she said it was perfect. Um, the next step is to get the fire marshal, and, and the building inspectors to start, but of course, I'm, I won't be doing that until I get like money and everything to you guys, but I just wanted to let you all know what I've been looking into and give your thoughts to see if you even want to, you know, like I said, we're just talking about it right now, and I'm gonna get some numbers and run them for you. I've told the principals to go back to their buildings, just to even sort of get an idea of numbers of what staff would be interested, um, because that's something too, this is something, well, as soon as school goes out and we start posting positions, when these people, even in the surrounding counties here, that we have a daycare, you know, to offer them, and I could see some coming from other districts, you know, even fighting for the opportunity to work here instead of here. So, do y'all have any questions about that? Uh, the plan would be from birth to preschool, since we have preschool and head start in our district, um, so at least that would give them the opportunity to come here, and we would have that for them until they start preschool.
What kind of training would the people over there have?
You would have a certified teacher, like in early childhood, like our preschool teachers already, some of those would be qualified, and there's different, there's a list that you could sort of pick and choose, but for us, I would want that certified teacher in early childhood to be over it. Um, you would have a room separate, like for infants to, uh, two-year-olds, then the next room would be like three- and four-year-olds. Um, we would provide breakfast and lunch, you would have, um, and they said, we would have like the middle school, how they prepare a breakfast and lunch for the learning center, when they bring it over, for those kids, they would bring it over for a daycare as well. Um, you would have like, it depends on the ages, like the infant room, you would have like one per five babies. Um, our facility would hold up to 10 infants if we chose to do that many, and for toddlers, we could have up to 30. So, that's what our, um, our room is, based on that, we could have up to 40 kids, which would be huge, you know, so. And like I said, depending on the age of the kid, like when it's toddlers, it's one classified per 10.
And that's for the whole, that's for the whole county, huh?
Yeah.
And then, the teachers, if they decide to come here or whatever, they just bring, bring their kid there before they go.
Right, they just pull back there, drop it off, and get, get to their school. And I thought this was pretty centrally located, um, you know, you've got Tyler that in, and middle school, and then here you've got McKee and Saint Gaten High School down that way, so, to me, it shouldn't be too far out of the way, um, and plus, they know we're right here, we have the school nurse over at the middle school if we were to need them, um, just a really ideal situation, so, as far as even location, building, the school for the lunch, breakfast, everything, school nurse, so.
So, is that, would that replace the learning center?
Well, as you all know too, I've had Dudley and Sam, they've been working on our upstairs here, I'm not gonna take them upstairs until it's finished, but you are gonna be so impressed. And they worked really hard, so, we're gonna have those classrooms up and running, so I was gonna move the learning center over here upstairs, have a couple offices, like we're homebound and stuff like that's up there, so we just move all those offices up there. But, um, our learning center, and so like our tech department, they've already been looking and getting ready and seeing what all we need to do, and, um, so it's, it's looking good, so they would actually be back over here in the building with us.
Is this the people, all the employees or just the teacher?
All the employees, certified, classified, um, so they have first choice, and if we were to have a couple vacancies, we can look into advertising to the public, but I think at first, let's just offer to our employees and see how it goes.
Where's this extend our building?
Do what?
How's this extend our building?
Well, we, we're getting a quote for like insurance policy, we would add it on because she thought it would just go in with our insurance, but there's special policies for daycares, just because of where it would be individual students, yeah, just like our school insurance on our students, it would be just for the daycare.
Would we need more restrictive security in that area?
Not necessarily, um, just because, um, you know, they did have that little building, it would be locked, just like our schools, and the playground out here would be fenced in, and she even recommended like between us and that, that little bit, she said that would be perfect, you know, 'cause it's not out by a parking lot or a road or anything, so, those are the things, and we'll just have to wait to make sure the inspectors might tell us that, but she says, yes, that it's gonna be a go, that it's perfect, um, so we would just go from there. So, what my next step is too, is like getting prices for things. As of right now, there are no special grants or funding, uh, but the way the daycares are run, it's called a five-star system through the state, and she said, once you get up to three stars, they'll start giving you funding, uh, right up to even like $2,000 a kid. So, and she said, I can help you get there very quickly, and it's more just like all the trainings, what everybody's providing, they can do some walkthroughs, and everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, cleanliness, everything, following all the safety guides, we'll, we'll get our stars, so she feels like that's something.
So, this will be, this will be self-sufficient pretty much after?
Yes. It should be. I can't promise at first, but in reality, and the theory behind it too, is right down to teacher attendance and paying subs. If they've got this to drop their kid off at, they can go on to work, instead of, well, my baby's ever called in sick today, so I can't have him. Uh, my husband was supposed to watch the kid, and he's sick, and I've got to say, you know, little things like that is what it's supposed to help in, and they said, research shows that it does help with most of that stuff, so. In theory, the money you're paying out elsewhere would, you'd be putting towards that. Uh, you see Dudley, of course, in the food, she's getting me all the money, 'cause it shouldn't be an expense at all, um, as far as the breakfast and lunch. The main thing would be the salaries right now, even the playground, there's some I'm reaching out to there to see if they can help us, um, so I think, like I said, our main thing would be salaries. So, I'm gonna look into all that and come back with numbers with, to you guys, to actually say, here's what it would cost Jackson County to run this.
Can we connect in any way to preschool?
Not yet, no. Um, and the other plus two is, you know, like our FCC LA and our, uh, consumer science and stuff at the high school, those kids can come and work and get some credits and experience too, so it could help fund those classes, and they would just be just here and going and work. It wouldn't take the place of our paid employees, but they could come and get some credits and work and experience, so. Uh, but it would not ever take the place of like our preschool, we couldn't connect it and use like money, not yet anyway, not unless something new comes out, but. And if there's any questions, you all think of specifically, call right me, and I can get you the answers, 'cause there was a lot of information too, that, those were just sort of the overview that I wanted to share with you all, to even make sure you're interested in me going forward with it, instead of, you know, no, we don't wanna do this. I don't think it'll be a huge expense to us, I think it will be well worth it. That's what I'm hoping, so. People seem pretty excited just talking about it, and I know I am, so.
How many, do you say, how many children per, uh, two-years-old?
Yeah, like that would be like one to 10, you'd have one classified, and you'd have that teacher overall of them, um, and like providing the curriculum and doing a little lessons, and just making sure the, that the classified employees too were doing what they were supposed to do.
So, she'd have like 10 infant to two-year-old?
Yes, yeah. Um, and like providing the curriculum and doing the little lessons and just making sure the, that the classified employees too were doing what they were supposed to do.
So she'd have like ten infant to two-year-old?
Yes, yeah. Well, actually up to ten infants. And then the, uh, two-year-olds to four-year-olds, you can have it to thirty. Yeah, so.
It's a one adult to five babies slash toddlers, and then one adult to ten, um, through two.
Yeah, three to five. And I can get you all on that, once I do, I'm gonna make a little presentation and pack it for y'all with all the information in it, cause there's a lot, like right down like to the playground and things like that.
I think it's great.
I do too, I think it'll be good for us, so.
So, uh, three E is the substitute personnel report. With that complete, we'll go on to number four, approval of bills and claims and monthly report, I need a motion. Second?
Second.
Eugene?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Yes for me. Approval of minutes from March the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five regular board meeting, I need a motion. Need a second?
Second.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes for me. Approval of the first reading of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year calendar.
Is that, I looked it over, be starting later than normal, right?
Yes, this is what's called the new variable calendar, it's been around for a little while, but, um, the variable calendar is, um, you cannot start before August twentieth. Uh, that's the earliest you can start, so that would be our first start date, cause you know, some don't start till after Labor Day. But, um, in order for us, because they wanna start late and get out early. So it's sort of the perfect world. And if you'll notice, there are like little breaks like once a month, you know, and then we had those planning days, cause you'll hear teachers say, and like this, gosh, we need a work day. You know, it'd be good to be able to go work with the teachers who stay or do some job admitted P D, so we'll have those days as well. So it's, um, those counties that are doing it, the closest one, of course, is Rock Castle, I've spoken to Carrie about it, and they, they've already adopted it again this year. She said it's worked great for hers. It, she says, one of the things that they have seen too is, you know, the teachers don't take off as often to go on little trips because they're sort of broken in, you know, you can plan a little better. Hopefully it helps with teacher attendance, um, too, along with everything else, but we'll see. So we thought we would try to hear, see how it goes and look at it next year if it does, and we can always go back to the traditional, restart earlier in August, so.
You know, that, that works two weeks later.
Yeah, mhm.
So, you know, we had some pretty bad weather, suffered pretty hard this year, is that gonna be harder to continue with?
Sort of the same rules apply, um, you're gonna have your ten N T I and it might put us off a little bit later. We've got like those, I don't know if you saw like the flex P D days and stuff. We can work some of those, the planning days, and those teachers still come in and just get to count those for those students as well, so. Shouldn't be in too bad shape, um, Carrie, you know, like I said, she's actually getting out, I think the same time we are, and she did this calendar this year, so.
I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene?
Eddie.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Yes for me. Number seven, approval to discuss slash award the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six annual bids and renewals. I need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Eddie?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes for me. Number eight, approval of the renewal agreement between Roberts Insurance, Jackson County Public Schools for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, I need a motion?
Approved.
Need a second?
Second.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Yes for me. Approval of school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six audit contract proposal, I need a motion?
There's a new audit.
This is the same one, um, Aunt Nikki and I had discussed it, and she and, and somebody else had said that usually you do a three to five year with the same people. And we had done threes, and so I think I told them I would do two more years with them.
I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Yes for me. Number ten, approval of indirect cost rates for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, I need a motion?
I need a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Yes for me. Number eleven, approval of the Jackson County Middle School subcontract change orders pending K D E approval. I need a motion?
Approved.
Need a second? Ronnie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Yes for me. Number twelve, approval of the Family Resource and Youth Service Center student funding allocation for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, I need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Eddie?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Yes for me. Number thirteen, approval of the Health Service Agreement between Jackson County School District and Family Health Care Associates from July the first, twenty twenty-five to June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. I need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Eugene?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Yes for me. Number fourteen, approval of C C E I S Assurance of Compliance for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes for me. Number fifteen, approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Jackson County Public Schools District Technology Plan, I need a motion?
Approved.
Need a second?
Second.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Yes for me. Number sixteen, approval of the twenty twenty-five Jackson County Public Schools Summer Feeding Program, I need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Um, Eugene?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Yes for me. Approval of a chief summer congressional academy application for twenty twenty-five, I need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Eugene?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Yes for me. Approval to establish and reestablish, I need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Need it, okay. Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Yes for me. Approval of field trips, I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Yes for me. Approval of fundraisers, I need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes for me. And on the public comment?
Yes, we have Ashley Foster signed up for the comments. They are, Ms. Foster, I will tell you, by statute, it's public college, there's fifteen minutes. Um, the board can respond and may not respond, it just kind of depends, it's usually more chance for you to speak and them to listen.
Hey, would you like to come off the phone or are you comfortable? If you guys can hear me fine, I'm just fine. Alright, I wanted to present to you guys today about, um, concerns at Saint Gat Elementary. I had a student at Saint Gat Elementary and not anymore. Um, due to safety concerns, mental health concerns and discipline concerns. Those of, of those things, I spoke to Superintendent Smith today in regards to those, but I did wanna address the board. My child has been hit twice unprovoked. Struggling with mental health as a result of those fears. My concern of discipline is that on the first occasion, this was treated as a suspension, according to my child, a fifth grader. The second occurrence, there is no response from my child as to what that discipline was. So the student was retained in school with an unknown title?
Ma'am, the board can't, I, I, I'm not trying to be rude, but because of F R P and privacy rules and because of state law, the board's not allowed to talk about discipline to specific students in any way, shape or form, like they.
Are they able to listen?
It, it's kind of a really gray area in regards to. Like you wanna talk about the policy for punishment or the student code of conduct, that's certainly fair game, but as far as specific students and specific.
I'm well aware that I cannot discuss the specifics, I've been down that road, I'm not asking for the specifics.
Okay.
I'm just stating that it was handled one way on the first occasion, not handled at, at an increased, um, rate, so to say, on the second occasion. So we'll drop that where it is, it's already been addressed, it's, it's a concern. Um, I'm happy to follow up via email with anyone who would like more information. I honestly would encourage many of you to reach out and get more information. I think it would be really important to how you guys conduct and do your jobs as board members. Um, I will move on to bus aids and the concern regarding transportation. My concern is that when I look out my window in the morning, I see a bus aid pointed directly forward with the bus driver. So there's no monitoring of the bus that I can see. Um, I realize you guys have cameras on the buses, I would highly encourage you to utilize those and see, what is your paid bus monitors doing during your shift? What's the purpose of them, who's supervising them, what role are they playing in our children's safety? I would encourage that whoever oversees that department or that those individuals, I would encourage them to get involved in that very quickly. And see what's happening on those buses and what's not.
Wait just a minute, I'm sorry, repeat that again, please.
I would encourage whomever is overseeing the bus aids to be actively involved in knowing what they're doing on those buses. How are they aiding, what is their role, are they fulfilling their role or not? Lastly, my concern is regarding the resource officer and the use of the resource officers. I've had several discussions with staff regarding resource officers, I will be honest, and I've gotten mixed communication about what their role is and how they play an impact in the school. My concern is resource officers on multiple occasions have been seen outside of Saint Gat Elementary at the far end. I enter at the other end near the office, and if I were to go in and be a threat to that school, how quickly is he going to be able to get to me? Why is he sitting out in his vehicle all day long? Who's overseeing this department in person? We have problems inside our school building, and we don't have enough resources inside to solve those problems, but we have that resource sitting outside. That's very concerning as a parent to have that as a resource, and we're not fully utilizing it. We can say all day long, there might be a threat outside of the building, sure, I'll agree with you, that could happen. If the resource officer's in the building actively involved and engaged in his job, his duties and responsibilities, he's going to be well-equipped to handle a threat just as quickly. If not more quickly than being at the other end of the building in a vehicle. I'd strongly encourage whomever oversees that department to, again, be actively involved in monitoring this, getting information, what percentage of the day is out in the vehicle? What percentage of the day is in the school, monitoring, being a resource to students and teachers.
Lady, uh, Miss, our attorney there, we sort of disagree a little bit, I know I can't take no action, but I've been elected board member forty-some years, so I can listen, alright? That's what I'm here for, to listen to your complaints.
These are concerns.
That's what the elects, and I know, when I say complain, I don't mean to assert a complaint, but you know, I can listen, alright? I may not just sit here and say, we'll take your land tomorrow, next day, but I can listen to your concerns, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Approval to adjourn, I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Yes for me.